I don't either. I don't either. I don't think anybody wants to.
We'll call the Lockheed Planning Commission meeting in June 19th to order. All rise for the next meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commission Chair Kerr.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Belding.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Adamson.
Here.
And then Commissioner Miola and Commissioner Newman are both excused.
Okay. Uh, let's see, non agenda items for tonight. Do we have citizen input on any non agenda items? Let it be known that the one person attending here uh is saying no. Okay. Approval of meeting minutes. So for April 17th. Did everyone get a chance to go over the meeting minutes? And any comments, critiques, concerns? I see that you incorporated the one comment with regard to the commission who have the time in this. So good. So do I have a motion on the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Check of it.
Okay, Nicole, roll call for.
Commission Chair Kerr.
Hi.
Commission Vice Chair Belding.
Hi.
Commissioner Rogers.
Hi.
Commissioner Adamson.
Hi.
Okay. Second item. Approval of minutes for the May 15th. Twenty twenty five planning commission meetings. Did everybody have a chance to read through them? Any comments, critiques? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes. For the May fifteenth planning commission meeting.
A second.
Okay, and Nicole, roll call.
Commission Chair Kerr.
Hi.
Commission Vice Chair Belding.
Hi.
Commissioner Rogers.
Hi.
Commissioner Adamson.
Alright.
And motion passed. Okay, so we'll take care of that. Okay, tonight. We are having two public hearings. The first of up is going to a probably a public hearing on the Lockheed zoning and development ordinance. It's chapter two dot two six. Sign code. Uh, looks like noted as LA twenty eight twenty four dash oh four. Yep, three minutes here. Yeah, okay.
Uh, we briefly touched on this, I think it was last month, and it goes back to last fall when the city had a uh complaint or enforcement action about some signage during the election season. And because a provision in the code allows additional signage during election season, that is six weeks or four weeks before and two weeks after an election date. It allowed additional signage, which by their nature would have been temporary type signs. And then there's another section of the code that addresses temporary signs. And neither of those sections refer to the other, and so there was a conflict. And so the council decided to delete the language in the code related to additional signs during election season. And that was brought up a couple or three months later to you folks in one of your meetings. Uh, just kind of letting you know that this is on the agenda now. Twenty twenty four, this is legislative amendment number four. So we're finally now having a hearing to delete that language. And it's just one subsection.
Subsection L of two dot two oh six dot oh six.
Yeah, it's at the bottom of the staff report, page two, or it's page seven of the packet. So what you see lying through is what's going away. And because it doesn't have any tentacles reaching out and latching on to other parts of the code, nothing else needs to be changed or revised.
So the section regarding, I'm sorry, the the section regarding temporary signs remains unchanged. That's that stays.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I'm going to ask another question. If it's a public hearing, you have things that need to be read into the record.
Uh, no, because it's a legislative hearing.
Okay.
But
Not because I do.
Yeah, just for the purpose of the record, I enter the staff report into the record.
Fair enough.
And so anyway, that's it. But at the bottom of page two of the staff report that is shown with the strikeout is going away and the staff recommendation is to pass a motion recommending that the city council approve the proposed change or deletion of that language.
All been through this. Do I have a motion?
I move the planning commission adopt the staff report and recommend the city council adopt a proposed amendment.
My second. And Cole, you want to roll call?
Commission Chair Kerr.
Hi.
Commission Vice Chair Belding.
Hi.
Commissioner Rogers.
Hi.
Commissioner Adamson.
Alright.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the Parks Master Plan. LA twenty twenty four oh two. The seventy nine page document that we have all been working through and developing.
About seven, eight months now, I think, right? Seven coming up. We keep that off in October, August?
Yeah, we really started. Well, yeah, I guess it was probably the fall.
Yeah, when we did the surveys and we started.
Survey was what, uh, August on, uh, what was that, community day or community evening, first week of August?
Kudos to Brandon and your team for doing the the public outreach.
Thank you.
Getting the information from the from the voters.
Thank you.
Uh, well, that was very helpful and instrumental in us making decisions about what what goes on. Or what what changes we make to the plan for the planning.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll let the staff know that. I appreciate it.
And it looks like, you know, staff report is complete, well thought out. All the strikeouts, strikeouts and markups are included in this as far as what changes, what doesn't change, what the new language, replacement language is going to be.
And and just for the sake of the hearing being open, I'll enter the staff report into the record along with the draft plan of the draft updated plan. And these two items tonight are scheduled to be at city council on, I forget.
July tenth?
Yeah, the tenth. And then they presumably would read the ordinance for each one of these for the first time that night. And then on August fourteenth would be their meeting in August, and then they'd have the second reading and passage of both of the ordinances. So uh in the, we focused mainly on chapter two, that was all the socioeconomic stuff that we needed to update with information from the twenty twenty census. And then there's another thing that is called the American Community, yeah, I guess, American Community Survey. And that survey was from two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty two. So some of that is not census information, but it's from the Census Bureau. And then, uh, chapter five was the main item where all the parks were listed and we were focusing on just Commons Park, Veterans Park, and Terry Park. And so just because of the changes to those three parks. And the population being, having the twenty twenty census population. And then just recently, last year, the Population Research Center. It's a state agency, but it's housed a PSU, so a lot of people think it's part of the PSU, but it's a state agency, so to speak. Um, they have to estimate every city and county's population as of July first every year by law. And then they also, every four years, have to estimate and forecast the population for every city and every county. And luckily for us, last year, that fifty year forecast for population came out. And so I took the twenty year forecast. I didn't run it clear out to fifty years for purposes of a park master plan. But anyway, uh, it's going out till to forty forty five and the estimated number is six thousand one hundred and ten. And so in four more years, twenty twenty eight, they'll do another estimate depending on what's happened here and you know, in terms of development, new housing and that kind of thing. They may, well, when they do the next fifty year forecast, the twenty twenty forty five number might be a little higher than sixty one ten, or it might be a little lower. But anyway, so that population number isn't the same number that was in the two thousand fourteen plan that ran out to twenty thirty two, I guess it was. So that caused a whole lot of numbers to be changed in chapter one, Metro, and in a couple other chapters. So anyway, because it was all numbers and there isn't much to talk about with those numbers. And it's all tied to the population estimate for twenty forty five. And I just showed those chapters in the markup version. And two and five that we've seen, I don't know how many times, but several times, I just put uh, for those two, I just uh, put in the packet the uh, clean copy.
Okay.
So anyway. That's my little summary, and unless you folks have questions about what is talked about for each park in chapter five, then there's three appendices.
Right, yeah, you put together a complete packet. Updating updating information language to reflect what we need for today.
Yeah, and thank you, um, in the, I forget which chapter, four, I guess, there is the map from the two thousand fourteen plan. And it is not, did, back then, it did not have the Abigail Scott Dunaway Park across the street. And so because that was donated to the city in twenty twenty, that's talked about in the new plan. But I didn't get the map updated. So by the time this is going to council, I'll have our GIS people show that little spot as being a public ownership in a park.
Fair enough.
Okay. And we, one of the things that that we were talking about earlier on is the is the dearth of of community park land we have. And the inability that the city currently has to to acquire the necessary or to acquire the
Correct.
The the park land that we need to have to develop to to fall in line with what what the guidelines are. So I, there there needs to be a discussion from our side and potentially a recommendation to the to the city council uh, to to investigate a process where we can obtain money if it's state park money from from the the state.
What we might be able to do to create some form of reasonable leverage.
A path forward, because we're we're between, right now, we're between hard to read with the strikeouts, but it's between eighteen and thirty seven acres short.
Correct.
Of what what a city ours size should have in the way of public parks.
And I think I I would then say, yes, uh, taking up that conversation, trying to put something forward to city council as a suggestion or recommendation. That I would put that as something that as under new business as opposed to at this point, because this is what we're looking at is this is action that's based upon what city council directed us to do with respect to survey and three specific parts. A very specific plan for what is. And that question of what can we be is important. But it's, it is, and it and it's good that it is a separate issue because then we can, we can focus on this, take care of this, and then we can also better address the other item as a separate issue.
I will save my comments for this.
Okay.
I have an idea. If you wanted to mention that, maybe there's a way to do that at the next meeting and tie this into there, but we'll wait to new business.
Yeah, and yeah, kind of looking back to years instead of looking forward, like planner would like to do, if you go back to years in the two fourteen plan, there wasn't a whole lot done to implement that. Not a lot of money was spent. Some things were bought and installed and so forth in some parks, but hopefully with this plan and with the amount of money that we have in the Park SDC account, then Brandon, with the direction of the council, can start a, you know, a straightforward discussion with the state parks people, the grant people, and say, you know, should we or could we, should we look first at a bigger chunk of money that would would help us buy a park? Or should we apply for smaller chunks that would improve existing parks and, you know, do a master plan for veterans and do some of those things and a master plan for Terry or Commons and then start building some of that. But anyway, that Brandon and the city council can work on that and hopefully they'll provide some good direction that will be, yes, contact the Parks Department to see what grant money is available and frankly, I don't know if they get any federal money that then they pass through as part of their state grant program to cities and counties, but hopefully everything they've got to provide grants to cities and counties is state money, not federal money or pass through federal money.
So we'll come circle back. That sounds like that's a little towards the future business as well. Uh, with regard to packet as it applies to the parks in question in support of what city council suggests is. I don't know that, you know, we we've all discussed this at length. So it's, the packet's complete, so unless somebody really doesn't want to, I would say I would make the motion that the planning committee, planning commission adopt the staff report. Uh, looks like in August fourteen, twenty twenty five. Uh, and I would recommend that city council adopt the proposed amendments.
I second.
Okay, we'll call it.
Commission Chair Kerr.
Hi.
Commission Vice Chair Belding.
Alright.
Commissioner Rogers.
Nice.
Commissioner Adamson.
Alright.
Okay. So that will go to the city council and they will be able to start their piece and do their evaluation review.
No, no. And I don't know how important it really is, but on page two of the development plan, the Lockheed Planning Commission, there's a couple of misphalanies in names under. Mine is Bedling instead of Velvyn. And it's Roger Webb instead of Rover Webb.
Rover, okay.
No. I mean, very, very minor, but.
Yeah, but easy enough to
Yeah.
Easy enough to slip through too, so fair enough.
I want to say thank you. I know sometimes it feels like the planning commission may not be doing a lot. But this is a generational planning document that you all had your, I know there was direction from the council, but I think you all had lengthy discussions on the way you see it, which led to other discussions, which we'll get into later, but I I I appreciate it. I think this is the group's first major thing.
I agree.
Outside of the state mandates that you all had to approve and obviously, thank you, Jim, because Jim has to do all the legalese of all that. So it's, 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 this is a big thing and I, obviously, I feel pretty confident that the council passes and that we can start working on that. But for this to be finished out in one fiscal year, we budgeted for everything to be done in less than a year. Thank you so much. And I'm, and I'm sure the council would feel the same way when it comes to their attention in July. So.
And it looks like next on the agenda, we don't have any work sessions for tonight. And while there's nothing listed for new business, it sounds like Commissioner Evans has brought up the issue of addressing, looking at something in regard to, uh, some tool that we could recommend to the city council.
In the least of a chair, we we need, we need to make recommendations of the city council. Bless you. We need to make the recommendation to the city council that they empower our city administrator to investigate, search for any kind of of funding source, state, county, even federal, if we need to. Uh, for the the monies that we would need to make an acquisition of of a sufficient amount of land to to catch us up to to the amount of parks that that would work towards keeping our population.
Or given the land that we have available at this current moment, a path that at least creates, it opens up that it gives I'm thinking three things. It gives it. What financial tool or tools might be available?
Yep.
How does that feed into land acquisition and a pathway so that as we do grow into the future, that land in some way could be at least some attempt made to go after it?
Yeah.
And then perhaps the third piece. Is there any kind of language that we could suggest to city council that might give the city the ability to put something some form of incentive language towards a developer while still being cognizant of how laws might work out that let's just say, the way laws, the winds are blowing would be a hindrance to doing something like that, but is there something that could still be put in place that might give them the tool to use that's not so out of order that might at least create some form of balanced situation? So perhaps Brandon, if you could look at the funding side of things, and Jim, if you could look at some of the language what other cities have used, it's kind of a, I don't want to say a carrot stick process, but it might be a carrot stick process. Other cities have used to encourage the acquisition of parklands when developments go on that's both fair and reasonable to a developer, also tries to accomplish the goals, that would be useful. Brandon can do some kind of guess as far as what financial tools might there, and then perhaps come back next month. And at least have, if not a work session, certainly a time block with discussion of, hey, here's what the findings are, what might we be able to do? Does that, does that sound like a path?
Yeah.
Starting, I think, I think one of the, one of the key elements we we were knocking things around prior to the meeting, looking at this industrial park down here, it would it may be a prudent way to elicit more activity on it if there were a donate a part of this for the park district and discount fees for for development of the industrial park. Down there, if what we're looking for is land to build a park complex, or we can get someone that will donate a section of land to the to the city to be used as a park. Uh, we could use that as an incentive for potentially for a discount in their in their development fees.
So here's what I'm thinking, and here's how I'm thinking, where I think you may want to correct it. If the planning commission wants to approve somebody speaking on their behalf. So we're already going to have the plant, I would assume Chair Kerr would come to the next city council meeting on July tenth and say, this is the work that we've done recently. We are coming before you to say we've, we are recommending you update the language to the city, the sign code, and then also approve the master plan. We also and and this is for you all to discuss, this is how I'm just trying to piece together, in accordance with how the demographics lay out, how much parkland is needed. We are recommending that the city council um, allow staff to find ways to achieve current production current park production rates for what the current population is, meaning right now, if it says we need thirty seven acres, try our best with the current population or current to find either vacant lots to buy or whatever, or investigate a way to, so I think it's a multifaceted, the person who comes on behalf of the council to speak says we are recommended that the council to look at ways to enhance park space now, but also with future developments, because I think one thing that I've heard continuously, and whether it can happen or not, it keeps on coming down to we're we're far behind on current inventory of land. Now, that doesn't mean that we couldn't possibly get land now, but we would have to do inventory on vacant lands. If there's any issue with those lands, what 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 I'm just saying, say, for instance, um, there's a house on Haylen Drive at the corner or a corner of Wilson, wherever there's a vacant piece of land, maybe that we could, the city can say, hey, maybe we want to purchase this for a small pocket park for this part of town. It would be within our limits, it would be within acres, we would have one, something that we're able to do that as we plan towards the future. It's what I'm getting, is what I think that you, what you're looking at trying to say.
Yeah.
Accomplish it for current day, but also forecast for a future development.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The the other thing that I would like to to suggest that the the city, city council address with with you and your staff. Uh, the the Stoller family is is right on the other side of of our community. And the, and the, their patriarch passed away a month ago. Uh, it would be, it may be a a worthwhile effort to reach out to them to see if they want to donate a park to for their name, for his name's sake to to be put up adjacent to our, to our uh, properties here, maybe inside our our urban growth boundary. They could acquire it and and donate a park to his name inside our, we take here, we take care of.
I think the biggest thing is is planning commission will authorize the chair to do that, and then I think that it'll come down to the council, are they looking to acquire more more parkland right now? And then if so, okay, Brandon, you and staff, we 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 want staff to look at ways to acquire parkland for current for current livability, but for future development, and then how that gets there would something me and staff would work on. But I think the first thing is, does the planning commission want to do that? And then if so, that person who would be speaking on behalf, which I would assume would be the chair, would then do that, and then if council so chooses to do that, then they would direct me. So it would be a three tier process.
Sure.
So.
Chair, if 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 you're unable to make that meet, I'd be happy to to stand in for the council.
We will stay in touch on that. And it sounds like basically it will be requested council to summarize direct staff to find ways to improve parklands acquisition, both for now and in the future. An example of today or now situation might be pocket park type acquisition that's probably the only size trapped.
Right now.
That might be available at this point in time, but also to, we want to be able to lay the foundation to for larger parks and acquisitions that will be in the future so that we've got that.
In the development code, et cetera. And this is all. And the development code, et cetera. And this is all with the, the consensus of the body. I know I'm talking, I know he's talking about, I want to make sure that everybody's on board with that.
Because that's, that's like Commissioner Rogers against the government.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know you are, but I mean officially, we have to go on the record.
Everybody's on board.
I would chime in if it wasn't.
Yeah, I know you would, but I, I just to formalize it
Yeah.
in the minutes and to an actual official giving the chair.
It's a, it's a real, I don't know, I would be shut down quickly. I mean, it would be nice to have a, a larger park, but it's a balance, like you said, with what we have available now. Anticipating for the future, if we're looking at, you know, six thousand people in, you know, twenty years, you know, we're having that growth and stuff. You know, how much we're funding up against the urban growth boundary, you know, all these factors play into it. So do it smart and, and you can do it right, so.
And I might mention that you never know how things might pop up, but you kind of know there's a situation out there, but when you know about it, it's the situation, but all of a sudden, a few months later, it's a little different or whatever. And so the thirty eight acre site on the north boundary of the city, that lodge um, east of Abbey Road and north of the city limits, um, that's owned by a winery, not local winery, but one down south of Salem. And they've owned.
Well, I'm a winery.
Yeah, well, I'm a, yeah. See, one of the wineries that is a corporation, you could buy stock in it.
I, I'm a, I'm a shareholder.
Okay, you'll have to.
If anything, I can't refuse myself.
Yeah.
Yeah, depending upon the number of shares, yeah.
Yeah.
Three shares, about fifteen million.
Uh, Willamette Valley, yeah.
So anyway, they've owned that for several decades and apparently they bought it as a possible vineyard site way back, kind of back then was the early days of the Oregon wine industry. Or they knew it was next to the city limit, those are the same, same city limits that were there then, they're still there now. And they thought, well, neither a vineyard or maybe it could get added to the U G B by, you know, fifty years down the road. Anyway, um, they are, I don't know how many months ago, but they contacted the city and apparently a developer is talking about it, kind of checking.
Like a month ago, I think we had a conversation, right? Was the last time we talked to him?
Yeah, I don't know, two ago. Yeah, a couple of months, but for something like that, if, given the current economic situation, if the developer goes away and the current owner, the vineyard folks are thinking, yeah, you know, we really want to do something with that, we don't, we don't think we're going to put a vineyard there, it's just not where our business plan is calling for us to plant vines. And so potentially that could be a site that the city might be able to buy. And uh, I don't know what thirty eight acres would be, but it'd be a chunk of money.
Yeah.
That if the city could have some portion of that committed to the purchase and then apply to the Oregon Recreation and Park Department for half or more than half of it and uh, work with the vineyard to abs or the company to have some kind of a, I don't know, maybe drop the price a bit because it's going to be a city park. Then something like that could happen and it would happen before any of this other stuff goes on.
Yeah.
So we just need to kind of be nimble on our thinking.
I agree.
And I think the combination with, with Willamette.
Vineyard.
Willamette Valley.
Willamette Vineyard.
Willamette Vineyard, yeah. And, and the, the state parks are at, I, we could, we could probably spannel a deal where they give us the land first next, that gives us the real ones that we can put. Put a, a multi-use park up there.
Mm-hmm.
Ball, ball diamonds and soccer fields and what have you.
Yeah, parks shouldn't be one of those things that always, not always, park grants are those things that tend to get a little bit more successful in terms of.
I, I, well, in particularly.
I kind of see more money given out in parks.
Yeah, because it's outside the urban growth boundary, the city would need to add it to the urban growth boundary in the C F U. But if it's going to be for a park, then we might be able to justify expanding the boundary to take in that thirty eight acres for a park and have the site agreement set up so that the city and the owner and uh, whatever else, maybe the Oregon State Parks Department, they would have all been talking about this and said, yeah, okay, city, if you can get it in, we have this agreement that X, Y, and Z will happen once you get it in the city limit or in the urban growth boundary, annex it and put the public zone on it. So.
Could even talk to the store family. That's a thirty eight acre park that, that, that trades.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be, it would be a legacy for.
Yeah.
For the patriarch, yeah.
And it does have some slope and some rolling character to it. So it's not like a really flat site that would be an easy turn into softball, baseball, soccer, whatever kind of fields. There'd have to be some major grading and everything going on out there, which just makes it that much more expensive to build the park once you own it.
Yeah, like Terry, like the Terry Park stuff we're going through right now, we're going to have to level it out to make it accessible and those same cost barriers would be the same thing on that, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's a much bigger lot.
Yeah.
The area, so.
Yeah.
You might be in a situation where depending upon what might actually be able to work within what you've got, have areas that are heavily worked, leveled out, and then have other areas that are left rolling natural, so you can, so you can actually get both.
Yeah.
With less overall work and cost, but still provide plenty of opportunity.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think it all kind of just depends on if it's going to be, if the developer wants to do anything with it or like, like Jim said, maybe they just, it just stalls and then they say, hey, let's look at it, but I know some barriers to that and they mentioned the schooling and it would most likely mean, I mean, four hundred units plus, you probably have to look at what, what a new school would look like eventually sometime down the road and is McMinnville going to want to bond that debt out for a school? I mean, there's just so many different power plays we got to do. It's just, there's six or seven different tentacles that's spread out.
It's all exciting.
Oh, it's exciting.
There's a, another forty acre shot just to the east of the thirty eight, it runs north and south, that big rectangle.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe uh, what would need to be going on is that would need to be added to the urban growth boundary also for a new school site and they would have outdoor recreation as part of it.
That would be perfect.
Right next to the city park.
That would be absolutely perfect. The, 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 the parks in the area here at, in, in Newburgh especially in Sherwood are, are busy from April to October with softball games. I mean, it's, it's like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's, it's nothing but softball games.
And even those lots are closer to commercial development than those parks are over there. I mean, outside that, that big park in Sherwood by the um, the amphitheater, but I mean, the walkability.
Yeah.
I mean, but obviously that's obviously for planning and hopefully, I mean, that would be, we would need support from the council and the community, so.
We just need to get, we need, we'll get the.
Yeah, we need to start in the first step being, let's have councils direct us to.
Yeah.
Brandon, are you in regular communication with vineyards or no?
Um, I have been, um, but now recently somebody who's interested in the property has met with me and with the staff on, if they can make the politics work.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because obviously the big thing that Jim communicated to me, which I communicated to them, was the E F U carve out and they mentioned either some favors or if we gotta, whatever, if we gotta make something work. And the way, the way it made sense is like, we can make this work if we can get the city buying. And I said, the biggest issues would be the, the park land, which I think they were remitable to doing that. And I think some of the concerns that we had to walk away with were a lot of the um, access points, because I think some of the access points that were talked about is putting everybody on grant and done away.
Mm-hmm.
And if you put all those people on grant, I'm not going to have a job.
Yeah.
So. And if you put them on the bridge, I'm not going to have a job. So I mean, I mean, they mentioned five or six different ways out and then getting the county involved, because I know it had to be improvements to the county road. Um, we're, we're talking expansions to bridge right now. If that happened, even more expansions, meaning maybe two lanes on each side, which would mean acquiring right of way or using eminent domain, it's a, this would be a multiple, multiple year project with probably fifteen different partners, but they made it seem as if money wasn't the issue, they would move forward. And I know they have emailed Gordon, our city engineer, a line of questions that Gordon, after our conversation last month, replied back to them and they said, we're going to punch some numbers and if we can make this work politically and um, and, and financially, we'd love to move forward. But I know I had, I was waiting for the new superintendent to get appointed with McMinnville School District. And she was, and she, the interim, Dr. Corny used to be the principal here in Washer.
Yeah.
And so she's mentioned how she wants to rebuild the rapport with Lafayette.
Okay.
So myself and, and Mayor McAlister are going to hopefully, I know Mayor McAlister is probably going to be with her before I do, but I'm going to be with her and we're going to talk about, hey, future, what are real, what's, what's realistically the goals of Lafayette? Does Lafayette need to look more towards Dayton? Or do we need to look more towards McMinnville? Because the whole issue with Meadowbrook was um, with development as part, as part of the development agreement. Um, anybody who lived in Meadowbrook has to choose between McMinnville and Dayton, but the taxes go to Dayton.
Uh, okay.
So I would see in a, in a development this big with this many multifamily, I would definitely see, okay, if we're doing that, the taxes are going to have to go one way or they're going to have to redraw school boundaries, which would obviously take state legislator to redraw the boundaries between McMinnville and, and Dayton. But also, like I mentioned earlier, is, is McMinnville going to be able to invest in Lafayette? Because like Jim said, hey, and like Scott agreed, that, that little spot, that little spot carved out to be, would be great, because they talked about that at our little um, strategic planning session, let's think about putting some ground for middle school. But we can't build a school.
Yeah.
They do.
They do, yeah.
And with the amount of population in Lafayette to McMinnville and without much, much Lafayette representation on the board, it would be very hard to see a, a bond passing just specifically for Lafayette unless it was a part of a major bond package and just, I don't know what the appetite is for that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's a major process. We have worked on it, but we haven't gone aggressively because spending, spending, spending city resources and time if it's just going to end this in a dead end. So we're really waiting for them to say, hey, we're looking to move forward.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
We've got some stuff, it sounds like.
It's, there's exciting stuff, but it seems boring because it's all, you know, you know how that goes, real estate, it just takes forever to get anything done.
We, we were, the, the, I, I think the the Fed is, is coming about, coming out and saying they're going to have two rate reductions this year.
Not today, though.
Not today.
Not today.
I don't know why, but not today.
Yeah.
If, if that, if interest rates calm down, if they start rolling back down to, we're at six and three quarters, six and five eight.
Eighty right now, we're at the high sixes.
Yeah, the low sevens.
Uh, we get down under six into the fives.
You start building again.
It, it's going to, it's going to create a, a flood.
Mm-hmm.
We, we were.
Yeah.
We were.
I don't know if that'll happen for certain years, so below sixes.
Yeah.
It's really.
It may, it may happen quicker than we think.
It should be, but it's just, yeah, so, so static. Crazy to think in twenty nineteen, I got an interest rate on a brand new house for three point two percent. And now it's like, people wouldn't leave that, you know, they would rather leave their spouses than get rid of that, that interest rate. I mean, I'm being serious, it's sad because people are like, you know, like.
Like, 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 son and daughter in a, in a, in a three bedroom, two and a half, two bath house. It's a narrow home in, in Beaverton. They, they really need to move into a bigger home, they need to a teenage heart.
Right now, moving on.
They can't, they can't add on because they've got houses on their eyes. But they've got a, they've got a three percent mortgage.
Yeah.
And they, they're not going to give it up.
Yeah, they're not leaving it.
They're not going to get that up to go set a bigger home.
Eight seven percent Lafayette, yes, it's not right now, so I could.
But if the interest rate starts coming down, gets closer to five, then. Well, same.
Yeah, so similar to the thirty eight acres we were talking about, there's the industrial property and it too kind of has something percolating, but you never know what might or might not happen and even if it isn't a basic, you know, uh, development project of whatever sort, we might be able to work with the owners to gain some parkland there. So anyway, a lot of possible things.
We're, we're thinking about right now, today, we're between eighteen and thirty acres short.
Yeah.
And, and, and Lafayette, twenty fifteen, we're gonna, we're gonna need more.
Yeah, that's why I go into the council and asking, hey, what can we do about today? And then what can we do about that?
If we just get up closer to where, where, where our our citizens are better served today. Uh, not necessarily, but if we can get to twenty acres, we get twenty acres added, it makes that, that narrower. And then we can keep it focused on future developments as, as the city expands either as north or to the, to the west.
No, I, I will say, and I don't want to drag this conversation, I want, I want much longer than I need to, but we have the funds for the park S D C. Now, outside of any grants or any new development, any money taken away from that pool of money for commons for Terry would go to land acquisition. So we'd also have, that would also be something I have to talk to council. Well, if we do this, we're, we're limiting money, possible money for development of the parks we have, but we're going to start, so I just want to, I just want to reiterate, we, we don't have a lot of money. So I mean, if, if they say let's do it, I will investigate and I will look at all the financial things that we can do, but I'm just going to let them know if we do do this, and so.
We, we, we need to do it step at a time.
Yeah.
Veterans Park, Commons Park. And, and talking about Commons Park, on the, on the next item that I'd like to bring up for us to, to have discussion on, uh, the, the process that you went through with the, the sending out uh, inquiries or uh, getting citizen input on what to happen to what we're looking for in the way of parks as a whole. I think it was very successful, as I've said before. Uh, we need to, I, I need to suggest that we, that we put together, you put together a, a uh, package to send out to the citizens for, for Commons Park to get an idea from the citizens what they'd like to see developed there in, in Commons Park. We've had discussions about different kinds of things going on. If we could get someone to draft up some basic proposals for a pavilion and a, and a basketball court or or a race stage and, and uh, the, the market area.
Yeah.
Power to the, to the market area, adding parking on the side, if we can, if we put together some, some concepts and send them, send the concepts around to the citizens to see if they've, what would they really want? What do they need? What do they, what would we like us to investigate putting into that, into that park?
Yeah, I think what would happen with the next step on Commons Park is we would have to go out for, um, request proposals um, from, uh, from planning firms who would design that and we, they would probably whiteboard, hey, here's what we do, five or six different options, get citizens involved, but that would have to come from the council saying, hey, let's, let's, let's work with the, the design firm, because we wouldn't be able to do that in-house, nor would our engineer firm, it'd have to be a, a design firm.
We have money in the S D Cs that we could use for putting together concepts, yeah?
Yes, but that also takes away from construction. So I would look for grants, but yes, that's, that's something, that would be a next step of the Commons Park process.
Chair, I would, I would like to make sure that we make a recommendation to the city council that, that we put together some conceptual drawings.
Well, the next step for any of these parks is to do an R F P, hire a park consultant, people that do nothing but plan for parks. And if Commons is the first one, uh, it kind of sounded over these last few months that Veterans was going to be the first one.
Yeah.
But then whether it's Veterans or Commons or Terry, the next step for those three is to do a park master plan. R F P, get the consultant, they would do the citizen involvement, they would do all the coordination and gathering information from not only just people that live abutting or I guess nobody really abuts because it's three rights of way in the railroad, but people right there across the streets and then community wide. Because we've already in this chapter five said we want a basketball court with a cover that can double up as a venue for whatever kind of community wide events might take place. So that would be something that would be in for sure when the consultant starts working with the citizens. So if there's going to be other little tidbits here and there, then they will find those things out, but that's not a big sight. But that's not a big site, it's 1.1 acres. And I don't know, that baseball field's gonna have to go away, I think, because a basketball court, even a smaller one, is now gonna take a chunk away. The community building.
Twenty by ten. Twenty by ten probably, and twenty by ten, twenty by fifteen.
Yeah, I think that's part of what the master plan would figure out is what size the basketball court, would it be one hoop? Or a hoop at each end, or two or three hoops, just kinda half court? And then a pavilion cover over it. And if it's gonna be doubling up and used on weekends for whatever kind of events, whether it's during the holiday season or farmer things in the summertime. The park consultant will have a lot of insight about that. And the pavilion then will be built in a certain way to not just put a roof over a basketball court that's essentially outside. But to provide something that's really protective for the various kinds of things that could happen there.
Excellent.
So, so, so taking a couple of these things play, it sounds like, okay, next city council meeting.
We'll make the recommendation, the request of council that they direct staff down the path of park acquisition. Uh, when it comes to parks themselves, since the recommendation was Veterans Park at the top. It sounds, path would be Brandon, council work with quest for proposals, get the request proposals into a park consult, will provide information on Veterans Park. Let that information go out there. Start the processes running out. That, that'll give an idea of what ones. Then I'm envisioning there is going to be a point in that particular process where if something wants to be done at Commons Park. There's gonna be some point along that process where Veterans Park is running. The point where, okay, if we wanna take a look, we want to take a look at Commons Park, even if it's just to get to that point. We wanna go down and get concepts made. Some of those concepts will start with what's included in tonight's recommendation. And that I'm envisioning from what Jim says, that park consultant will include that. But that park consultant is also, well, they do parks, they might sit down and say, here's your idea and this is what you requested based on this. But based on our experience as a park consultant, if you change this, adjust that, do whatever, here's a couple of other ideas that will that may, may or may not include that original recommendation, but might make better a better overall outcome. But I think that's gonna be a natural option. That doesn't mean we would not want to make a request of council to start addressing Commons Park. I think there's gonna be a point where that will present its, more or less present itself. Plus, it'll give us an idea how does money play out in this. That might also, on Veterans Park, that also might either push forth or temper what happens with Commons Park.
Well, I will say with, with veterans, I jumped the gun a little bit. We already have a surveyor out there surveying and.
Still have to stay there.
Yeah, and our city engineer and our team have discussed doing it internally. Because a lot of the infrastructure is already there.
Okay.
Um, and what the site development would look like if we did it internally. So I know Gordon is like working on that already, because I think that was one of the, I think when we had talked, that was the lowest cost.
Yep.
That we can do, that was kind of, I don't wanna say shovel ready, but things that we can probably do for the low cost to show the community, hey, we're returning your dollar for dollar. But when it comes to Terry Park and Commons, we're gonna have to get, we're gonna have to get a, a, an official site plan, we're gonna have to do a major thing. But on, on the Veterans Park, since it was, since it was already known, like what needed to be done, we're able to work through that now with our engineer. As we're going through the process, because we know that was gonna be the first one and it was gonna be the one that we can probably achieve lowest cost.
What's good to see is that, that, that it's showing the community there's progress being made.
Yes.
Not just talking here, but progress is actually being physically made.
Because that's what Jimmy mentioned, the last time this was done, we haven't done much. Outside of, you know, we got the park on Jeff, you know, we got some parkland, we did some upgrades. Having all done away, but there hasn't been a lot of major work done in 11, 12 years. And this is where we actually need to start doing something.
Yeah.
Something, even, even with that, before, once we get the survey and have that as the basic knowledge of where the property is and how big is it and what are the dimensions. The next step would be some kind of a master plan. Because if, like, well.
No, I, I see what you're saying.
Park and there's the commemorative element in the northwest corner. But we need to be able to take that to the people that live around there and in the bigger neighborhood area. And say, hey, what do you think about a dog park next door? And even though the questionnaire from, you know, the August, September, October online thing was heavily in favor of a dog park. If all the property owners around are gonna scream and yell and we don't want no barking dogs running around there all day long and all night long. Okay, well, that is what you would work out in a master planning process. It wouldn't do the city much good to say, the dog park's going in here, what do you think? Oh, well, the decision's already been made. I guess there's no point in thinking anything other than we're shafting, we're gonna have dogs barking all the time.
Most of the people around that park are already.
Folks know that they're.
Already a dog park.
Yeah.
Functionals that we work their concerns into a master plan that would ameliorate whatever negative thoughts they have.
I, I agree with Jim's sense. We, we, the, the, we've done, you've done the engineering, you're getting the engineering going, but we need to, we need to get an RFP. We need to make a recommendation to the city council that accepting this, we need, the next step is to do an, an RFP to a park planner to create a master plan for those three parks.
And, or, or at least Commons Park.
Or at least. For Veterans Park, because that's the one.
Or Veterans and Commons.
But it sounds like Veterans will be done internally. Okay, well, if you wanna go down a master plan, so maybe.
Yeah, we need to adjust the master plan.
For him, he doesn't need any city involvement or citizen involvement. He's got water in Bridge, water in Was, in Washington. Run laterals to drinking problems. And I don't know if there's gonna be a, a restaurant there or not, but all of those things for him. Yeah, just start drawing up the plans and build it.
Yes.
From a planning perspective and city council perspective, even planning commission perspective. The effect of building the plan of the park as a dog park. Well, we don't know what the citizens, even the abutting citizens are thinking. And if we don't know what their concerns are, then we won't know what else to put into the park plan. I don't know, the park plan, yes, the plan.
So even, so even, even if we develop Veterans Park internally, a parks master plan, we're still gonna have to incorporate all of that.
Yeah, who internally would do the master plan? Well, nobody here has park planning experience.
So we'd almost need.
So we need an RFP.
To do a park, to park master plan, it would incorporate what's done internally on Veterans Park to reflect that. But then it would also incorporate, incorporate any RFP that goes outside for Commons Park, for Terry's Park, or for any other park, if it's done outside. Or anything that's done internally, it's still going to incorporate pocket parks, so all inclusive, yes, okay.
Yeah, because Veterans would be pretty simple for a firm. I imagine a lot of firms wouldn't even bid on it because it's too small. And the vast majority of the square footage is gonna be dog runs, dog park. And they probably wouldn't get into maybe the real details of the commemorative corner. I don't know, we might want them to design that too, but whichever company gets it, it's gonna be as small, it's barely over a half acre. So there's not much, there's gonna be a walkway east, west. And then figure out, you know, is the bathroom there and what kind of sprinkler system to keep the grass irrigated in the summer and that kind of stuff. So we need professionals to do that and they will do the citizen involvement. And we'll come up with a master plan for Veterans Park. And once the master plan is there, and we'll kind of know what's gonna be in it, because we will have been telling the park master plan company, yeah, we need this, we want that, we want whatever, then it'll all be there. And then the engineer can go to work. He'll know where the.
So, so basically.
If there's gonna be a bathroom, and if there is, will it be?
So basically, basically two requests to stack to council. One, as discussed, the park acquisition. Two, revise, create, update, adopt a park master plan. So.
Yeah, RFP, RFP was a designing firm to, to create the master plan.
Or. An RFP to do a master plan for Veterans Park. And we can, we can apply to the state parks department to get money to either pay the whole cost of the master plan or to pay some portion of it. That way, we won't be spending all of our SDC money on the very first thing that we're trying to do to improve the park system.
And I would, I would suggest that we would hold off on doing planning for Terry Park.
And that's, and that's what I haven't said.
We still have the, the.
That, yes.
River improvement.
That Terry Park would at some point in the future be incorporated into the park's master plan, but at this point in time. Well. I think that's, yeah, we, we, Veterans and Commons was the one we're concentrating on, and Terry's kind of the third one that is off in the distance a little bit, but we've only talked about this. We wanna, we wanna push the RFP to at least go down that path for Veterans.
Do a master plan for Commons Park. And Terry will have to wait.
Yeah.
And depending on how much money we can get from the state or any of the other agencies that are in appendix C that have money for park and recreation purposes. Then as we go year by year, we'll know how much money we're getting from everybody else. And how much we're having to spend of our own, then we'll know what we've got to do. The next project, so to speak, a master plan for Commons Park. And depending on what improvements are in there, I don't know, it'll be only a half a million to build it. Or it'll be a million to build it or something like that.
Two, two requests for city council next month.
Well, actually, I'd beg a one more.
For you for next month.
Take it away. What, what do you think you got for us today?
All right, we have, we have the traffic plan, the traffic study is, is, is in process, underway.
Uh, there's, the state has gotten a little behind with some other work. So I have yet to see the official scope, uh, scope of work. Um, but we're just kinda waiting on them right now since.
Right with it. All right, so the traffic plan is, is, is going to take about a year, 18 months?
Uh, 2028, if we're lucky, it'll be finalized by then.
Maybe 28, three years, no, two years.
Uh, I would suggest for discussion, if, whether it be in a joint session between the planning commission and the city council. Or in a recommendation to the city council. That, that we take the next steps in initiating a, a review of our urban growth boundary. Uh, we don't currently have the necessary space to grow inside our, our existing urban growth boundary that's recommended by the, by the state. So we need to make get the next steps going, so that when the traffic plan becomes available, we can incorporate the traffic plan and an urban growth boundary. Expansion, the city that, that we could and working where we wanna grow to coordinate more information with our traffic plan as our traffic plan is being developed. Versus waiting for one to get done and then we get stuck having to go back and make any amendments to it. We're not doing the other.
Think we'd have to be careful about that without the traffic plan in. Maybe we don't need to wait for it to be done without that traffic plan in that. There'll be two things that might guide us on, on, on expansive growth, and there might be two things that are guiding. One, what does a traffic plan say? Because that might provide clues as far as where we would be best to grow. And then two, geography, the lands are available for us to expand into. Those two might either complement each other or they might be totally contradictory to each other, if that makes sense, so.
No, it makes sense.
This is kind of bureaucratic, but the way the state is gonna look at that, and it's not just a traffic plan, it's a transportation systems plan. We got a railroad, we got vehicular, regular roads, we have the river, we have natural gas pipelines, I assume somewhere around the city. And so any kind of transportation, transit, they're gonna be looking at all those things. Certainly, most of it will be vehicular traffic on roads, but in 23, we applied for a grant to get money to do and to update our TSP. We really don't even have one because it's, I don't know, 20 years old or we never did one.
Two thousand and three, I think, two thousand and two, yeah.
And we didn't get granted any money. We redid it in 24. And Brandon was the technical writer guy that knew what to say and how to say it, and we got the money. And so the discussions have already occurred as to what the TSP will have in it. And those occurred several months ago and what the state is working on is writing up the scope of work and everything to reflect the discussion that we had. The amount of money that the uh, Transportation and Growth Management Program has devoted to this project is based on those discussions. And none of that said, by the way, we want to have money to assume that we're adding 100 acres of land somewhere. So that's not part of what they're gonna be doing. And so if we are on that track and the state with the state money is saying, okay, we know what Lafayette's gonna wanna do. And then Lafayette says, oh, by the way, we're gonna apply for, we're gonna initiate a UGB expansion project. Then right away, the Transportation and Growth Management people are gonna say, oh, wait, hold up here, what's going on? And so it, in my estimation, would be better to not have the city council direct the city to initiate a UGB process when we haven't even signed the contract to do the work for the TSP. That will of course mean that the TSP will do what it's designed to do and they'll follow the tasks and everything and get it all done. And then maybe toward the end of that, the city could initiate a UGB expansion process. But at least at that point, it wouldn't upset the apple cart.
Yeah.
Before the contract is even signed to do this TSP. And with the UGB, we don't know if it's gonna be east side, west side, north or wherever. And so once the TSP is updated and then we expand the boundary somewhere. We can apply for a update of the TSP and because it's such a recent TSP. The only thing they'll really need to focus on is the new land that's been added.
Okay.
And what the density will be. Because if we add some for single family, okay, that generates so many trips. If it's for multi-family, it will generate three or four times as many trips and that kind of stuff. And so, uh, it just, knowing how state agencies work, particularly nowadays with spending state money. Uh, the legislature this year has still not been able to pass their big everybody agreed, transportation is a big deal this session. And they got started on it in the first couple of weeks. And now we're a couple of weeks from the very end and they don't have anything adopted yet. And they've got some Democratic senators that are saying, no, we're voting against it. At least against what they've got up to this point and only two weeks don't go. Anyway, uh, the state, well, in ODOT is statewide under the gun. There are people who have been working for several years to point out how the Oregon Transportation Commission. And I, uh, with the planning, we've got the Land Conservation and Development Commission, seven appointed citizens. Appointed by the governor, confirmed by the senate, and they are the ones that make the real decisions. They'll kind of override or whatever. Whatever, they don't really supervise, but they're the ones who make sure that the Department of Transportation is getting things done and so forth. So the Oregon Transportation Commission, the opponents of the, of ODOT, the department. Say, has been bamboozled more than once. By the ODOT people saying, yep, here's a big freeway interchange project, it's going to run two hundred million. And okay, commission approves it, it gets on calendar, they start working on it and right away, oh. Well, it's going to be four hundred million, well, it's going to be eight hundred million by the time we're done. And so the opponents are saying that is a strategy of the department. To give a low ball estimate to the commission, the transportation commission. Just to get an approval to start the project and once it started and everything, then the department gives them all these. Increased inflation numbers and all of a sudden the project's four times more expensive than they thought. And oh, where's that money going to come from? Well, we don't have it. And so. There's those kinds of things going on and we as a, particularly a smaller local city. If we before the T, our TSP were really starts. Jump in and say, oh yeah, by the way, we're adding to the UGB. The state's going to scratch their head and say, well, now wait a minute. Maybe we can spend this money now. Maybe we should wait two or three years for the UGB process to be done and then if there's any money. Then we'll see if we want to give it to the city to do a TSP update.
Um, um, help, help me understand the, the traffic plan, the, the, the traffic study that we're doing. Are they going to, are they going to simply look to, to fix? Or to, to lay out the, the traffic through the city based on the current size of the city? Current traffic of, of the city, or are they going to, going to just projecting what growth would be?
One of the purposes of that. Traffic, a fifty year traffic forecast by P, the Population Research Center. Is to provide information for anybody who needs it to know how many people. A per, a particular city will have.
Sure.
In it. And so as part of the TSP. Neatly, we can say, yeah, just last year was our turn because they divided the state into four areas.
Sure.
So they do all the cities and counties in this area. That one year, next year, next year, next year will, on the fifth year, they're back again to redo, because they have to do. Complete forecast every four years. So we got ours in twenty twenty four, Yamal County and the. Ten cities in the county along with the whole other, all the other counties and things in the northwest quadrant of the state. So we've got that and the transportation consulting firm will be very happy. Because it will be a recent estimate and they can go out twenty years. Go out fifty years.
Yeah, they're going to do some estimating as to where the, the size of the city is going to, what it's going to be in the next twenty years will be able to six thousand. People, so we're going to have room for two thousand people around the city right now, we've got no room for anybody around the city.
Yeah, and you never know during the period of time, the, the city might say, what, two thousand more people? Oh no, we don't want that. And all of a sudden you have a city that's been essentially. Accepting of growth or even pro-growth.
It's going to take into effect what the projections are. To, to determine which way flows or not. And I mean, just, we just, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm new to the bureaucracy.
Yeah, and that's what the TSP does is it goes through all the issues, starts about. Oxide at the end with whatever solution is acceptable to the city.
And then if, if we wait till the, we get the traffic plan in two thousand and eight, then it's another. Eighteen months, two years for a UGB?
Uh, probably twenty four months is what the last one was, right Jim? The person was here.
Yeah, essentially, the, the actual work was about two years worth. We got interrupted by some sign code events. And I forget what else, something else got injected.
Would be stuck with the, with the, the current status of the urban road map. Really isn't providing us much of any room to grow or to cover two thousand people until after twenty thirty. I'm, I'm simply trying to, trying to say if, I'm not to drive. The, the traffic service plan, the TSP. But to, to work hand in hand along that same line to, to figure out where the city wants to grow. Where we need to grow, where we can grow. And you've, you've indicated that. So the west of us is, is land that is, that is not encumbered by the, by agricultural. Uh, regulations to keep us from using it. We need to look at where we can grow and expand our urban growth boundary in there to, to incorporate what we can right now. We may do another UGB after the TSP comes out.
The chicken and egg is UGB expansions and transportation, no matter which one you do first. Like if you.
Someone's going to.
Well, okay, then you expand the boundary and you need to revise the TSP then to reflect the TS, the UGB expansion. So, and if you don't do the, uh, TSP first. Then you're doing the UGB first and you're waiting years and years. And the reason the city decided to do a TS, to reply for a TSP. Was because we have some real significant right now problems with the roads.
They said to twenty twelve.
So for six years.
I, I understand.
Not make sense to the citizenry.
I, I understand the, I, you know, the, the concept of try to put things hand in glove, but it sounds like bureaucratic side of things doesn't allow that. So it sounds like the best thing to do right now is. Let's get the transportation system plan rolling, just let it, let it roll. It'll be at least. If it takes eighteen months. Since this is mid twenty twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, yeah.
Brandon's saying twenty twenty eight.
So it's twenty twenty, okay, it's twenty twenty, we get that back. It is, from what Jim says, going to include. And incorporate a certain amount of growth improvemental traffic. That's good. We don't know where that traffic is going to come from, like it's this nebulous, hey, we know these roads are going to have travels to. Certain amount of traffic, yada, yada, yada. Once that traffic plan is either done or very close to done within, say, a couple of months. Then we can take and really could make the recommendation to council. To do urban growth boundary expansion. That, that is not going to disrupt. The TSP, because that'll be able to finish, we start the urban growth process. We make the best, most informed choice we can. And it would have to be based primarily on geography. Make the best choice we can so that whether it's north, east, west, or head south across the river. On the left, but whichever direction. We make the best, yes, we can, we start that process in motion. That process starts in motion, gets traction, yes, it's going to take. At least twenty four months to complete, so yes, we are out into the future, we're probably twenty twenty eight. We're looking at twenty thirty, maybe twenty thirty one, that's out in the future, however. Once that chunk of land is known, it's brought into, brought the UGB boundary. Adjusting the TSP plan that was just done. Yeah, interpreting from what Jim says, that's going to merely be an update or adjustment. And that will be. Low cost and much easier to do, so even though it's not quite. The same thing as, you know, what I would call hand in glove process. It's certainly going to be a dovetail process where, yes, this takes place first, but the city just set up so that this. The TSP gets done, then the UGB can come along and slot into it. And if something needs to shift. That, that sounds like this, yeah, I would say that at this point, let's revisit the concept of urban growth boundary, but. That's going to be down the road.
And my, my only concern to, to charity is that we know that the TSP is going to, going to address this corridor here.
Well, I don't address that quarter, but I'm going to guess it's going to.
And it's going to address this traffic on this stretch.
Yeah.
We know those two things are going to be the, the primary focus that we know as citizens, that those areas need to be. But it's, it's un, until we make some adjustments to the urban growth boundary to say, this is how we want the city to grow. How we want residential to be, commercial to be, industrial to be, et cetera, et cetera. We're, we're just going to sort of take it hand in hand. With whatever, all those lots around us end up coming to the city and saying, well, this is what you want to be.
In, in some respects, like I say, it will be, that, that, the decisions about what lands and what properties there. Will be independent of the TSP, but that doesn't mean they, they'll come together down the road.
They're going to be independent of Lafayette. They're going to come to us and say, we, we own this land, we want to develop.
Oh, well, yeah, there, there's a certain element.
Do we want to be part of, do you want us to be part of the city or are we going to? Pay taxes to Carlton, because everything north of us is, is Carlton.
Carlton is there too, yeah, so.
No, I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm, 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 I'm really not trying to be.
No, no, I, yeah, but I get what you're saying.
I think it's, it's something to revisit. I think we, you know.
We need to have a discussion.
It's, I, I understand, but right now, Scott, in all due respect, it's a discussion between you and Jim and. We're, Dave and I are sitting here, you know, not being part of it, so. You know, I think it, I, I'm a little irritated, you know, to be honest, that it seems like we're going in circles right now.
Yeah.
It's not moving forward.
And, and yeah, for right now, I would say, yeah, you guys are sitting there and I'm kind of sitting here going. This is something that, as important as it is, it's not.
It's not.
It's not even, it's not a today, tonight, it's not even, it's not even a, it's not even a, it's not even a next year.
Yeah.
Subject.
It's something that continues.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it came to the back of my brain.
And, and, and I think I've had enough conversations and I, I'll try to wrap this up with, 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 um, with my hammer. I think we've had enough conversation individually that I think Scott knows that. I know you're passionate about this, council as I am, the minute we can start doing something, it's going to come to you guys. Like, I think we all know how I am, and especially with council, like, the minute we can get some, I mean, I mean, me and Jim talked about this the past two budget seasons. Are we ready for UGB talks yet? No, because we have TSP, we have these other things we got to work on. Plus, I also think we got to think about the staff time with working on the parks master plan and then the TSP plan. How much more bandwidth is engineering, me and Jim going to have to work on that? So there, there, there's some logistical issues that we're not prepared for yet, but the minute we're ready to go, we're going to start talking about it. But I think the first two things that we have for Chair to talk to council is great headway. Because that's a big, major thing that we've been talking about.
Yes.
RFP for parks master plan.
Yep, I, I will hang up the third one.
The third one, we know that that will become, but, and we, but we also have an idea of now where that's appropriate. And also why and the, the, the factors that go into it. So, as you said, you did all the advocacy, so. Still worthwhile, at, at least to me, worthwhile discussion, even though it's a little bit, sounds like a little bit of a, an annoyance to both. Commissioner Building and Commissioner. Thank you for your patience, gentlemen. Okay. Looks like there's no old business. Uh, any commissioner comments and let's do this, any commissioner comments from either Commissioner Rogers or Commissioner Building? Okay, our next meeting will be July seventeenth with the same way. Either I will go to the city council meeting on the tenth, if something comes up on my schedule. I don't know whether we want to vote on it or not, but if something comes up on my schedule, we need to make sure that representative is there. Commissioner Addison has volunteered, but at the same time. Commissioner Building is the vice chair, so.
Just, just to let you know, uh, I will be flying to North Carolina to visit my son and his. Wife and, and my grandson on the sixteenth, so I won't be here for the, the meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay. So fair enough, so Cole has got that down, so. Okay, uh, next time, uh, uh, something about an adjournment.
I, I, I motion to, to adjourn the meeting.
Roll call.
Commissioner Cherker.
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Chair Building.
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Adamson.
Aye.
Thank you all.
I had to think about it.
I had to think about it.